Welcome everyone to the study session for August 11th, 2025, 6:00 PM here at the City Council Chambers. Thank you. Welcome everyone to the City Council Study Session, August 11th, 2025. And Mr. Assistant City Manager, I'm going to have you tee up the first item, the Independent Square Master Plan.
Yeah, good evening, mayors and members of the council. As the council will recall, back in December of last year, we adopted this square redevelopment plan. One of the implementation measures of that plan was to work on establishing a zoning overlay district. So Community Development Director Tom Scannell is going to present that to you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tom Scannell, Community Development Director. As Mr. DeSalle has pointed out, going to give a brief presentation on the Independent Square, Historic Square District. So first, a little bit of background, the HSQ or Historic Square, it is an existing special purpose district that is already in the Unified Development Ordinance. No property has been rezoned to HSQ. So even though it's been in the UDO since 2009 when it was adopted, it was never put in place on any property. The current HSQ language does not currently align with the recommendations and proposal of the adopted Independent Square Master Plan. So what we are doing is an amendment to Section 14901 HSQ to put in place the new Historic Square that aligns with the Independent Square Master Plan. So the Independent Square Master Plan, it was adopted in late 2024 by City Council. This was after a lengthy community and stakeholder engagement process, many open house meetings, many nights of discussion, but ultimately the consultant put together a plan and the council adopted that master plan, which provides guidance for the future development and redevelopment of the Independent Square. It identifies building types, land uses, orientation of buildings, and provides the guidance for design of those buildings as well as public open space. On the screen there, you can kind of see a little screenshot of one of the drawings that was included in that master plan. Within the master plan, there is a implementation plan, and it had several tasks associated with that. Under the Align City Policies portion of the implementation plan, it had adopt the master plan. Check, that was done. That was again approved by the City Council back in 2024. The next one was establish a downtown district that implements the recommendations of that master plan. And that district should create a set of standards designed to, that closely align with that master plan, but that also develops a streamlined development review process to encourage development. That is what the proposed HSQ district will do. So before I dive into the HSQ, want to give a little background of what special purpose districts are. They are a tool for when you're dealing with a special planning situation, much like we have up on, up on the square. Something that was developed long before building codes, fire codes, zoning codes, all those things. And when you're trying to reach those goals where broad zoning regulations won't necessarily help you reach those goals. They are a base zoning district and often provide flexibility in development regulations over what standard zoning districts allow you to do. So as mentioned, the proposed HSQ includes a wide variety of regulations from allowed uses, design standards for residential mixed use and non-residential types of development, site design standards, streetscapes, landscaping, screening, as well as signage. All, many of those are not currently included in the HSQ. So the current district refers back to our standard sign regulations or, or our standard landscaping requirements. So the proposed HSQ proposed those regulations that are tailored to fit within the existing environment. It does so through a framework of sub-districts, and it uses those sub-districts to regulate allowed uses, development standards such as parking, building height, building setback, site design, open space, all those things that we typically see when you have development. As you can see on the screen there, we have the three different sub-districts identified, and I'll go into further detail of those, but you have the properties shaded in red, that is the Historic Square. The properties in purple, which is the downtown transition, and then the properties in yellow, which is the downtown neighborhood district. So the Historic Square Sub-District, it's intended to preserve what we have and reinforce that traditional development pattern immediately around the square. The downtown transition, this is intended to enable a variety of commercial mixed use and higher density residential uses. And as you can see there, that downtown transition area is shown there in the purple. The downtown neighborhood, again, this is to provide a wide variety of housing. So whether it's a single family, duplex, floorplex, row house, it is intended to preserve that type of housing to provide, but yet that is in keeping with the context of the neighborhood. I mentioned that within the different sub-districts, you regulate the, the land uses. So they consolidated all of the uses into one table. And as you can see on the screen, we have the different sub-districts, the historic square, downtown transition, neighbor, downtown neighborhood, all identified. And then those uses are identified as what's allowed, what's allowed subject to conditions, or what uses are not allowed. Residential development standards, again, it's to promote a variety of housing types. And it establishes the standards based on the, the building types, whether you're building a single family home or a fourplex or a row house, it has slightly different design or slightly different development standards. Lot size setbacks, they're also all regulated within the HSQ. This right here shows some, some of the building standards. Again, it identifies if you're a detached house, townhome, two-unit, has the different lot area, maximum height setbacks. All of those are outlined within this district. Accessory dwellings, the HSQ does allow for accessory dwelling units or ADUs. It does so to ensure compliance with life safety codes, provides limitations on the number per lot, and addresses the regulations for whether it's an interior ADU or one that is located in a detached building, the size of the unit, parking spaces. All of that is regulated within the HSQ district. Switching gears, moving to mixed use and non-residential, the development framework, again, it establishes the design standards based on the block frontage. So as you can see here, there are different color blocks, and that identifies what the design standards are for those particular blocks. You have the Historic Square as well as the downtown transition. Keep in mind that this is intended to preserve the historical design pattern that was developed in, in the square well over a century ago. When you get out into the transitional areas, there's a little more flexibility there so that it can promote kind of a wider variety of development, but one that is again in keeping with the walkability and the urban design that you see on the Historic Square. Similar to the residential development standards, we have the regulations that regulate lot size setbacks, building height, the facade massing and composition, the articulation of the wall plan. That is how much different differentiation there is in the wall plan, how much it's setback, what's the human scale associated with that, much like what you see of many of the buildings up on, up on the square. Again, some of the key elements address alleyway access and, and activation. That was a big thing that was brought up during the planning process, that we have a lot of alleys, and those could be assets for the square. You go to many other downtowns and you see these, these alleys that are unique. They have lighting out there. They've, some retail has used that for seating and, and other things. So really to access that, bring excitement there, activate it. The HSQ also identifies the architectural standards from primary and secondary materials, how much of each type has to be used on, on each building, what that facade is made up of, the transparency, meaning the, the windows along the street frontage, entry features, signage, landscaping, screening, all of those, those regulations are found within the HSQ, and they're, and they're tailored to fit the development pattern that you see on the Historic Square. Open space frontage, this is to promote outdoor active spaces along streetscapes or in alleys. Again, provides the standards for how those are going to look, feel, the size of those. All of those are found within the HSQ. Parking arrangement, parking, want the parking to be located behind the building. As you walk along the square, you see many of the parking lots are located behind the building. There is a provision that no off-street parking is required for non-residential uses less than forty, 4,000 square feet. And again, it's, it promotes access to those parking lots coming off the alleys or shared drives. You're looking at shared parking, public parking. And it also introduces parking maximum, and this is used to prevent the over-parking. When you have a finite amount of resources of land up on, up on the square, you want to make sure that you're using that to the highest and, and best use. And a lot of times parking lots are not that highest and best use. So in summary, the, the proposed HSQ district will replace the existing HSQ as it currently exists in the UDO. This district will be a tool that will be a simpler method to regulate development and redevelopment up on the square versus the standard zoning districts that, that we have. These regulations are tailored to implement the recommendations found in the Independent Square Master Plan, which is, the intent is to preserve and enhance the unique character of the city's Historic Square. As mentioned, it outlines the development standards for whether you're doing residential, non-residential, or mixed-use developments, and it proposes to streamline the development process so that it, it encourages reinvestment rather than deterring it. The Historic Square, it was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their July 29th meeting. The Planning Commission did recommend in favor of that. City Council will hold the first hearing on September 2nd, followed by the public hearing and second reading on September 15th. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
Anyone, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Tom. In the documentation that was given to the Planning Commission, it mentions compact homes. Can you expand on what a compact home is?
So compact home would be a smaller home on a smaller lot, much like what you find up on the square right now. Many of the lots were platted in the 1800s, and many of the lots are 20 to 40 feet wide. Again, the city's standard now is for 60 to 70 feet wide. So when you have lots that, that small, you want to be able to utilize those, those lots to build a home on there, and so it would, this could allow that to occur.
Okay, the same documentation also mentions a director for the HSQ. Does it, does, does it currently have a director, or is that something new?
No, so within the, the HSQ, again, it is, this is geared towards fostering development and redevelopment up on, up on the square. So with that, the HSQ does give the Community Development Director, that's myself, the authority to review and approve these types of development applications, assuming it meets all of the regulations as outlined in, in this district.
So the HSQ director would be you?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, that was my second question, how is that person appointed or whatever? I think the only other question I have is about the alleyways. Are, are alleys, do they have to be a certain, do they have to be a certain footage wide at this point, or do you know?
Many of the, the alleyways that exist on the square, again, they were developed prior to any types of regulations, but really looking, there's no standard in the HSQ that says how wide they, they have to be. It's, would just allow for the activation of those, whether it's going to be used by a restaurant to throw some tables out there, a retail shop to throw some displays out there so people can go up and down those alleys, shop, eat, overall, just have a good, good time in.
Well, my only concern was if they're, you know, putting stuff in the alleyway, people wouldn't be able to get through. That was kind of a concern. And then as far as the parking, we're already kind of losing, I think we're already losing parking spots up there with the streetscape. What's the plan to kind of take care of that?
So the HSQ currently doesn't require any additional parking unless there's development of more than 10,000 square, square feet. So this proposed HSQ actually lessens that to 4,000 square feet. So if a building were to come, come forward and they, and it was over 4,000 square feet, they would need to provide additional parking to meet the demand for that use.
Okay, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Anyone else have other questions? Please proceed.
Thank you. One thing I think we need is better signage on the parking lots so people know that those are public spaces that they're able to park. Often they say, you know, restricted or restricted during these hours. And if they're just public parking lots, then the easier for people to know that, the more likely they are to use them. I know that this is a common tool, this overlay or redistricting is a common tool used in many of the local suburbs to be able to advance development. I appreciate that we're using this. It gives a lot of clarity to the developers who want to come in, so I appreciate it. I also know how much work went into developing this, so my, my thoughts of, of thanks to you come down. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tom. Thanks for all the work you've done on this. This is just another, another step in the right direction as we're looking at developing and bringing the master developer in to reshape the square. This is part of the business plan, which gives a set standard to the developers who do want to come in here. So they have that standard set, so there's not a whole lot of hodgepodge. With the parking, that's been a topic of conversation. We are reducing parking along some of the routes and the streets, but I mean, you have the Fayetteville Parking Lot, the Wild Bill Hickok Parking Lot, the parking lot that's over here next to Blair Sox. Missouri Main Street, when those folks come in town, some of the developers who have come in to look at our city, they never complain about how much parking that we have up here. There is probably more parking than, than anywhere else. So we have been looking at that and being very conscious of that. I'm excited that we're moving forward again, this thing, one more check off the box. Mr. DeSalle, this question is for you. With Mr. Crandall and our master developer, what phase is he in? What, what is he looking at to do on his timeline?
Yeah, no, good question. We have worked with Copenhagen and Brooks on looking at possible acquisition of lots within the square to further this plan. You know, one example, just within this property right here, we've got the Napa Building. And adjacent to the Napa Building is the City Theaters Building where they store some of their equipment up there. And, and we've been working with them to possibly acquire that. But again, it's, it's really working through that, trying to maybe touch base with the county a little bit on some of the properties that they have, you know, the, the big parking lot that's just kitty cornered of the, the County Annex Courthouse Building there is owned by both the city and Jackson County. So just working to see how we can get those lots together, and then possibly looking to developers to see how we can redevelop those areas.
Sure. So I'm excited to see how that comes out. So this is just one more step in, in the process, in our fairness, to reimagine reshaping the square. This is probably a 15, 20-year-long venture that we're going to be looking at. And this is just a step, I would say that we're probably 15 years behind in not having this put in place, but we're here now. So as we're looking into the future, this is what we're going to be using and working out of. So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your time.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else have other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Tom, just a question relative to the, the transitional areas. And the question is, is are they, is the facades, are they intended to be a, a, I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to place here, but are they intended to be a, a uniform look? And is that intended to be applied to existing property as well as new property or new builds? Or can you comment on that a little bit?
So within the HSQ, you know, the design standards of mixed use and commercial buildings, it's going to apply obviously whenever there is new development that takes place. If there's additions and other changes, some of the rules may apply. And all, and again, all of that is outlined within the Historic Square. It outlines, you know, if you're just doing a tenant finish, what you have to do if you're doing obviously new build or retrofit or, again, all of that is outlined in the district so that it's clear to anybody who's using this document. They will know what the rules are going into the game and throughout, throughout the, the entire process.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? If I may, just to make sure I've got the ratios and numbers correct on the parking. So on efficiency spaces, there's one space per efficiency unit. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then 1.5 spaces for a one or two-bedroom unit for parking?
Yes.
And then two spaces for a three or more bedroom unit? Two spaces for a three or more bedroom unit?
So that is, those are our current parking standards
Right.
for development outside of the HSQ.
Okay.
So within the HSQ, and I don't have those, those numbers here at, at hand, but the parking is along those, those same lines, but I think it's a little more reduced.
And do you know how much is reduced?
I would have to look at the ordinance, and what I can do is I can get that information to the city manager to get that to the entire City Council.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have other further questions? Okay. Mr. City Manager, anything, anything else to add to this?
Again, this will be considered for first reading at next week's meeting, and then up for final consideration at the first meeting in September.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good. Thank you. Scene, no further discussion on this item. Mr. City Manager, we will go to the Independent Fire Department Communications Presentation. How would you like to proceed with that?
We'll go ahead and ask our fire personnel to come forward to make this presentation. And while they're doing so, just wanted to have a conversation as the fire service continues to evolve, so too does the equipment and technology that support the men and women of the fire service. And so tonight, wanted to have a conversation with you about those continuously evolving needs and, and opportunities. And so I'm going to welcome Chief Walker to get us started.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. So right now, we're just, we're exploring all options for the future of the Fire Department Dispatch with, with IPD's dispatch to bring it more in line with what, what we see as the national standards that relate to fire service and fire service safety. So for the presentation, we're bringing up John B.C., John Burrell, to stir it. John, take it away, buddy.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk about this, this briefly. Three truths throughout this whole presentation. First and foremost, the more I get into this, the more I look at where I think we want to be in five years and 10 years. We, we see dispatchers involved in that, the ways that we respond, the ways that we communicate, the role that we want them to take, they only become more crucial in the ways that we want to get better. Secondly, we recognize that having dedicated fire dispatchers, it's the pinnacle of what we want to be. And maybe we don't get there this year, maybe we don't get there next year. That's the, the ultimate goal is a fire dispatcher dedicated to fire operations. Lastly, and I'm going to emphasize this several times through this presentation, the things we're talking about right now, the, the improvements we want to make, they're focused on infrastructure and logistics. They're not focused on, on personnel issues. They're not focused on operational policies with police. We're looking at infrastructure development, better supporting them as they support us. At the heart of this proposal, there's some technological suggestions I'll talk about here in just a second. Where we would be hoping for one dispatch console that's dedicated to fire, that we would be supporting along with six positions, five telecommunicators plus one supervisor that would report through the PD, dispatch command structure, and then ultimately to fire administration. ultimately to fire administration. I'd like to briefly give a couple of scenarios about why we're kind of leaning this direction. And in order to do that, I need to explain something that probably many of you already know. A firefighter mayday is an emergency distress radio call made when, when a firefighter's in immediate danger. I would, I would assume similar to an officer-down radio call. It's a life-threatening situation where most operations stop and everything focuses on helping that individual. And that's not, doesn't just happen on the fire ground, that happens in dispatch as well. One of the examples I just want to briefly mention, it happened back in 2021 in Maryland. There was a house fire and the initial fire crew went inside to fight the fire. A captain fell through the floor and it wasn't immediately noticed. The fire scene was busy, it was chaotic, a lot of things were happening. There were different radio frequencies being used. He was trapped in the basement and he started making radio calls for help. He started making mayday radio calls. He called seventeen times and wasn't heard for a lot of different factors. Finally, when he was heard by crews on scene, they didn't really communicate with anyone else what was going on, they tried to do the rescue themselves. A lot of things went wrong on this scene that have nothing to do with dispatch. The reason I, I use this example, and I went back and forth on, on whether to use it or not, is in this situation, dispatch could have caught that radio call and could have started the actions to go after this guy a lot sooner. It's one of the many ways that they, that they would serve us. On an emergency incident, we're, we're focused on that incident, we're focused on resolving things right there in that moment, handling what we can handle right there in front of us. We're hearing the sounds, we're seeing the things, we're reacting. Our dispatchers function as an overwatch, and we see this with fire or, or police or emergency services, they are overwatch. And typically, they are fairly unsung in that role. But the stuff they handle is, is crucial, and we have seen this in particular in a couple of incidents here lately, things like coordinating mutual aid units, emergency radio traffic that we don't necessarily hear, location of victims calling 911, coordinating all the things around this, this incident, watching our backs. So full disclosure, in, in June of this year, fire administration approached dispatch and said, hey, we, we would like to have a dedicated fire dispatcher during structured fires. To their credit, they, they said, okay. And that's part of the reason we're here tonight, is that's working so well for us. We would like to see that happen all the time because unfortunately, right now, due to staffing, due to limitations, they can provide a dedicated fire dispatcher only when staffing allows. And of course, we would like to see that across the board for a lot of reasons. The other issue with how things are working right now is even if they do have the staffing to provide that fire dispatcher, that pulls from something else. So we have a structured fire get knocked out, they have enough dispatchers to give us a dedicated dispatcher for that incident, they may be pulling somebody from P D. Sector 10 to cover us, which isn't an acceptable long-term solution either. An example of the system working, how this, how they protect us, one of the ways how they protect us, in 2013, a residential structure fire in Ohio, a firefighter fell through the roof. Another firefighter saw it, he called a mayday. Incident Command was initially unable to respond to this, but dispatchers overheard the radio call. They were listening and they were dedicated to the incident. They initiated a second alarm response and they initiated the actions that ultimately saved this firefighter. They're watching over us, they're handling all the things around the incident that we're necessarily sometimes too busy to handle or sometimes we just don't simply hear. So the question, of course, when we're talking about this stuff is, who does it around us? Because of consolidation of 911 centers, a lot of departments have dedicated fire dispatchers. As you can see, Kansas City, Missouri covers a lot of fire departments in our area. Part of the pull is, hey, you pay us a certain amount of money, we'll provide dedicated fire dispatchers for you. All the fire calls are routed through their center and they dispatch for those organizations. Same for Lee Summit, and of course, K C K. has their own dedicated dispatch. So the agencies that don't around us, there are a few that didn't respond, but again, for the most part, smaller, definitely smaller agencies, smaller volume. So the big question, cost estimates. I tried to be liberal in my estimates. I was told just yesterday that my, my dispatch console estimate is woefully low, so my apologies on that. Of course, personnel costs are a big part of that final dollar amount at the bottom. But I do want to emphasize the two items in, in, in red. Part of this is personnel, part of this is technology. What I said earlier about infrastructure support, I really mean it. And if, this doesn't have to be an all-or-nothing sort of, sort of implementation. The key components here are technological support for our dispatchers. The two there are CAD-to-CAD between fire and A M R, and the second is priority, fire priority dispatch. I'm not going to get into fire priority dispatch, but if you're familiar with emergency medical dispatch, it's the same thing for fire. Emergency medical dispatch, when I call in on a 911 call, it gives the dispatcher standardized questions to ask and then gives them, as, as the dispatcher puts that information in, it quantifies that call, gives it a code, so then we can assign a response priority to it. We can say how many resources we want to go. Fire does, fire priority dispatch does the same thing. But what I really want to, really want to focus on is, is CAD-to-CAD within any of these other things, fire name, R CAD-to-CAD. So for a number of years now, our system has operated under this, this process of transferring calls. There's two, there's two examples here. The top one is how it goes right now. So a, a 911 call comes in, our dispatch takes it, they dispatch out fire and police. If they need medical, then our dispatcher has to pick up a phone and do a voice transfer of that call to American Medical Response, give the information, and then they can try to listen in on the call as long as they can to give our responders additional information. We are clearly identifying a failure point in that transfer. And I, I really do want to emphasize, I do not believe this is a personnel issue, I think this is a system design issue. The best metaphor is if I'm sitting here and I'm, I'm juggling things and, and you keep giving me one more thing to juggle, I'm going to drop something at some point. Part of my role is to investigate when we have breakdowns in the fire and EMS response. And I can tell you, this is consistently happening, and it is consistently because of, you could call it cognitive overload, when we have one more thing to do and that transfer doesn't happen. Sometimes it happens on our end, sometimes it happens on their end. But what this ultimately results in is a call being dropped and one of those two assets not being sent. This is, this is simply an example. This past year, a fire apparatus gets dispatched, they get on scene, they start providing care. They're, they're waiting for around 20 minutes, so they make a radio call, hey, is our ambulance coming? A M R. gets contacted, hey, we actually didn't know about this call. And again, I, I want to stress this, I cannot stress this enough, I do not believe this is a personnel issue at all. We've traced these to the ones we can trace is, we had three calls coming in, I had this officer calling for this, I had this unit fire call, this, this or this, I had two calls holding. Yes, I believe I made the transfer. Whether or not they did, it's, sometimes it's, it's impossible to tell, but this is a failure point. And I do want to emphasize, we've, we've known this failure point for years. I mean, I have studies from 2007, I have the E M S. study from 2009. Recommendation number one, develop a CAD-to-CAD interface between City's 911 Center and A M R.'s CAD to allow for complete digital transfer of call information. I also have a proposal from 2012 that looked like it got right to the point of signing and then, and then didn't, didn't happen. It's not an easy thing to implement, but of all these, all these requests in this proposal, I would say it's easily the most crucial for our 911 system. A CAD-to-CAD, CAD-to-CAD interface is, is difficult to implement. We have to have cooperation from a lot of different agencies and of course, the, besides the cost question, what information are we comfortable sharing with our partners? Some of the options to have that, that immediate sharing of data, the location, of course, the call itself, phone numbers, call types, call notes, who's responding. So the way it would look if we, if we bought this system and implemented it, is the 911 call would come in, our dispatcher would take it, get that information. Instead of a voice transfer, it'd be a couple clicks of a button and it pops up on A M R. screen, and then there'd be data sharing back and forth on the call, the nature of the call, the location of the call, and of course, the updates that happened during the, during the progress of a 911 response. So I'll wrap it up with just a couple, couple brief things. This was in 2016, it was in Virginia. Residential structure fire, the initial crew was inside fighting fire and they got separated. The firefighter fell down an elevator shaft, which you didn't really expect in a residential home, and he became trapped. He started making radio calls, the dispatchers heard him making those radio calls, and so they contact Incident Command, say, hey, one of your guys is down. And they said, no, he's not, we have everybody. And there's radio traffic back and forth of dispatch saying, no, I, I hear this guy. And Incident Command saying, no, we have everybody. This guy ended up self, self-rescuing. And that's how Incident Command found out he was trapped. They were recognized for their potentially lifesaving actions. Had he not, had he not self-rescued, they were the only ones that knew he was in trouble. So to kind of sum up a little bit, firefighting is a team sport and, and I wonder if, in the past, how much we've kind of recognized that and engaged our dispatchers. We want to do that more, we want to do that more in partnership with P D. Dedicated roles are the pinnacle, we want to get there. We've tasted it, it's right for us, it's, it's much of what we want in the future, and we also want solid infrastructure. That's technology support, giving them the tools and giving them the process that allows them to do all the tasks they're doing with minimal amount of kind of extra work. It is an all-or-nothing proposal, we could implement this in pieces and bits and pieces, and it feels weird to say this, it's just the honest truth, a lot of time you see infrastructure developments like this in response to an incident. I'd love to see some of these at least considered as proactive action as opposed to reacting when something, when something goes wrong that could have been prevented by pieces of this puzzle. But I appreciate your time, sir. Happy for any, taking questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
All right, thank you, John, that was very good. Question for the city manager. At any point in time in Independence, has the fire and the police dispatch been separated?
I believe there was a period of time prior to the merger several years ago, yes, sir.
Okay, and the reason it was, do you have any idea why it was stopped?
When I was hired into the city, that was already a merged operation, so I'm not certain the history of that.
Okay, okay, well, I definitely, I, I would be for the idea, obviously, if we could find the funding. I think it only benefits the fire department and the police department because dispatching is a difficult job and you throw more and more at them, you know, it's definitely, definitely mistakes can be made. So I'd be all for it if we could definitely find the funding, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. B C Burrell, thank you very much for your presentation. A couple of questions for you. So when you talked about the sharing of confidential inform, information, is that, that we just set up a series of M O U.s. with A M R. that allows us to do that? Do we borrow from other communities? Is it just inherent in the CAD system that if they sign on and we sign on, we have shared information? I'm just curious how that happens.
Absolutely. We control what we share, they control what they share. So there's a lot of flexibility. We would look at other agencies. Topeka, Kansas has identical CAD systems and a very similar working relationship. So we're going to go out and visit them in a couple of weeks and see what they do. I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that's largely dependent on what the police department is comfortable sharing with an outside agency, and I understand the concerns there.
Okay. I, I know when I visited with A M R. a couple of years ago, they were talking about where they kind of ranked in this market for doing CAD upgrade on their side. There was nothing we could do until they were prepared to be able to make that investment. Have they done that? Are they ready for us to do the work or are they still working on their side?
That's a good question. They are building a new dispatch center, a new, a whole new operation center. Their new CAD will be in place, they're ready to move forward by the end of this year.
I know that we certainly see our dispatchers being stretched. If you would ever like to go and have admiration for somebody's job that maybe isn't top of mind, sitting in the 911 center and watching them multitask in ways that my brain would not be able to do. And so I want to be really attentive to their needs because burning out a seasoned dispatcher isn't good for anybody, it's expensive and it isn't good for the city. So I appreciate the care that the fire department has made in their prioritization and their training. I know you've made some investments which they were extremely appreciative of. And I know, B C Burrell, you have worked really hard on the priority-based dispatching. Do you see this as the complementary piece to sending the right equipment at the right time?
I do. Criteria-based dispatch is a, is a short-term solution. We need access to priority dispatch, and A M R. has that. And so this CAD-to-CAD interface would allow us to transfer that call and then essentially watch that call as it's coded, and then as soon as it's coded, dispatch out our fire trucks or even before then. So I apologize, I hope I'm answering your question correctly, but we can't do priority dispatch here because A M R. does, you don't want to duplicate that. But if we can watch what A M R.'s doing and as the moment they code that call, then decide to send fire trucks or not, I think that'd be the best solution for this dual dispatch that we have here in Independence.
And I would imagine that that will also give us the opportunity to be able to scrape data, to look at both our quality of care and our quality of dispatch, to be able to do continuous improvement work that now is partly anecdotal because it's, it's a little harder for us to be able to collect and analyze. I mean, you talked about how you go through and have to match up. Yes, okay.
Well, CAD-to-CAD probably would not give us much additional data that we can collect, but it would set the framework for a different working relationship and relooking at the, the EMS ordinance. So I can't think off the top of my head of how we could glean a ton of data from a CAD-to-CAD. But that's a good starting block to look at the relationship with A M R. and have some opportunities there that I think they would welcome.
Fair enough. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Councilman Stewart, my brother used to be a fire dispatcher as a fire captain, he used to fire dispatch for Fire Station One when I first got on in 1996. I believe we were beginning to merge out of that and combine the two services. My memory is a little foggy, it's been a little bit since 1996, so that was part of the fire department's responsibilities at the time. How many calls for service are we at or on pace to for this year for you guys?
For Independence Fire?
Yes.
Twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
Based on criteria-based dispatch, taking us down from what would have projected to be 29. I said that horribly, we were on path to be 29. C B D. has dropped us down to 24,000.
Do you guys, do you, do you go from your fiscal, our fiscal calendar or do you guys go to calendar, calendar?
Calendar, calendar.
Calendar, calendar. So we're on pace to hit that many this year? What did we do last year?
Last year, we were just shy of 29,000.
Yeah, I think about, I think we were sitting at about 28,000, yeah, roughly around 28,000.
And this year, we're sitting around 24,000, again with C B D. doing what it's designed to do.
How many of those do you guess are being transferred to A M R.? Half?
More than half.
Eighty, eighty, probably around, I'd say that all of our EMS calls were run about, probably about eighty, about 85% of our calls are going to be EMS-based. So they're all going through A M R. And so what, what, what John's saying is, yeah, we've, basically what that's going to do is it's going to increase our communication back and forth with A M R.
Sure.
To better, have a better patient outcome. So what they do is they do E M D. dispatching, so they will rate, they'll take the call, ask call taker certain, certain information, and they'll code that call, Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta, Echo, is how they'll do it. And so once they code that call, it will tell us, it'll actually give us more information to be able to not only know if we're going to respond or not on the call, but whether we're going to respond with lights or sirens and just, it's, it's overall a better system. When we had the CAD-to-CAD, with that, it reduces our need to have E M D. dispatching because we don't, we don't want to question the call, the caller twice. So it's just a seamless transfer of information back and forth.
Right. Mr. City Manager, is there any next steps that we could be looking at?
Well, I think throughout the course of this fiscal year, we need to continue to evaluate these opportunities for further streamlining of the processes, looking for where we have economies of scale that we can leverage. But I do think, you know, looking into the future, our budget's going to certainly need to anticipate and prepare for this because obviously, those calls for service are only going to continue to climb both just as, lots of reasons, right? I mean, as our community continues to grow in population, as we continue to age certain segments of our population within the community, there's just lots of needs that are going to arise. So I think we're going to need to anticipate that and, and allow our budget to create capacity to prepare for that.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed. Please proceed. Thank you.
Just a question relative to staffing. And I'm wondering, you know, there's additional staff that would be in this scenario. Will that, I know we've had difficulty maintaining our dispatch, the level of being fully staffed in dispatching. Will this help with that or will this make it more challenging? I'm just curious.
We have had challenges hiring in dispatch for sure, just like a lot of areas. Our thought is widen the net a little bit, that there might be some opportunities for people who want to specialize in fire as opposed to be trained across the board in all the, in all the different response methods.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other further questions? Thank you very much. Great presentation and good information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, anything else to add for that one?
Nothing else for that one, sir. Just wanted to get this on the council's radar and keep this conversation front of mind for you.
No, this is important information. Thank you very much.
Indeed.
Madam City Clerk, please bring us up to date on the boards and commissions.
A recommendation has been made to appoint G.K. Callahan and Donna Knoll to the Independence Arts Council. A recommendation has been made to appoint Jason Pearson to the Heritage Commission. And a recommendation has been made to reappoint Les Boatwright to the Public Utility Advisory Board. Staff request direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, reappointing these individuals to the above boards.
Thank you. Anyone else other comments, other ideas before we wrap it up? Mr. City Manager, anything else?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. With that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.